He's still in the hospital. So, he said he could not be making the meeting in my area. I texted him.
Yeah.
He went in Tuesday, Oak Street. I think it was Tuesday. Yeah. He's, I think he's already seen him.
Yeah.
Now, it's five thirty, so I'm gonna go ahead and call a meeting to order. Unfortunately, Jim, our mayor, is still in the hospital. So, we wish nothing but the best for him. Um, doing a roll call, I guess. And wait for Mister Jackson to be seated.
Or what?
I'm gonna take roll call here, so I'm waiting for you to be seated, please. Al? Rob?
Here.
Dan?
Yep.
Connie?
Yes.
Lana's here. Angie?
Here.
Dee?
Here.
I don't think we have any utility guys here today.
JD's here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgot the nuke, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we are present. I would like to see a motion to approve our agenda, the minutes, the paying of the bills, and I guess we'll hold out on the building permits. We'll do just those three for starters, agenda, minutes, and bills. Somebody wants to make a motion, please?
Mm, moving.
Second.
Rob, second. Okay, now let's go to the building permits. We have two. One from Ashley Stewart. My understanding, she's going to move the, structure that's already setting next.
The carport.
The carport. That is west of my bus barn. It's gonna move that down to their location of eleven oh three Oak Street. So, do we need to do them separately? Most likely.
If you want to, yeah.
Um, so if we could have a motion to approve that. I check that, it's fine. Anybody second?
Yep.
No second. So, Ashley's moving of the carport has been approved.
You gotta vote.
Oh, um, thank you.
I'm still typing, so I was gonna say something.
So, all eyes?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Building permit approved for Ashley Stewart. Then we have one for Melissa honeymoon. And Melissa wants to put in a wood and chain fence that she's drawn out here at eight oh six Elm Street. So, is there a motion for that building permit?
Where's that? Eight oh six Elm? Is it a chain link or is it just a?
Wood and chain link is what it says in the materials.
Chain link.
And she talked to Corliss about it, because Corliss was down there measuring everything.
We get kind of selection defenses around town.
Sure. Well, it does say wood and chain link. So, we hope that doesn't mean.
It's not that specific. But wooden fence calls for chain link. Yes, I think she has dogs now.
It's a big fence.
Well, I think she has dogs now. She never used to, I think she has dogs.
Okay, so I'll approve it.
Got a motion for it, is somebody to second it?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, honeymoon fence has been approved. All right, Dee, you wanna do a treasurer's report, please?
For September, I had ordered bank reconciliation, everything appears to be correct. One of the CD reporting, you'll notice there are five funds that earned interest. Review the daily transactions and the accounts payable for the dates listed. Review the time sheets and one of the payroll for the two payroll periods. And I reviewed the general ledger entries for the month.
Any questions for Dee? If not, can we have a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
A motion to approve the treasurer's report.
Second, anyone?
No.
Treasurer report, report has been approved. I guess Connie will start with you, if you have any counsel comments. Nothing from Connie? Al? Anything to share tonight?
No.
Rob?
No.
Dan?
Where's our town, Leeds? Who's the town cop?
Oh.
Anyway, they'll be getting a little act showing up. Now, that's what, uh, that's what we pay them for, you know, they're supposed to be here.
We can visit with them to ask if they can make a better attendance at our council meetings as well. Um, only comment that I would have is, and maybe some of you have seen or heard, we had another attempted break-in in town at the old bus barn, which yes, I am and Hovey are the owners of that location. But someone took a metal, I'm gonna say broom handle, that wasn't very strong, and tried to pry open the overhead doors. Kinda did some bending and what have you, but they did not, it does not appear that they gained access. But, people, if you see something, you hear something, report it to the sheriff's department, please. Um, we've gotta work together to keep our community safe, to keep our property. Again, obviously with somebody that doesn't own it, so if you don't own it, stay off it. So, that's my concern, so the sheriff's department does have the report. And, like I said, we all have to watch for each other. Utility report, do you have anything to share with us?
And did you do all the counsel comments?
Yeah.
You did?
Unfortunately, Jim is not here.
Yeah, we got me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I'm sorry, Angie.
Just wanna remind people, if you haven't scheduled your meter test with Ferguson to do that, we only got above, what was it, twenty-five percent had responded? A little over twenty-five percent. You might already have a new meter, but they still need to do a lead survey. Or, that's the federal requirement now to have every household water tested for lead or however he's doing it.
He was telling me, the D O E was down, he had twenty-three people sign up for it, that's all.
Now, this isn't an option, people.
I'm done.
It's, you know, you're requested to call that number, set up a date and time. And, believe me, it's very quick, doesn't take them long at all.
Ten minutes.
Yeah, I was gonna say five, ten minutes probably max. Because I think he did the post office and our truck shed and my residence in a matter of less than a half hour, so.
My house was less than two minutes, okay? My shed was a little bit longer because my meter was behind the water heater underneath the sink, but maybe ten or fifteen minutes, it was very quick.
So, again, this isn't an option, guys, it's something that we are required to do. Okay, and also, I will be going back to school October eighteenth through the twentieth.
And I'm working.
And Dee's gonna cover all those students, two days.
Three days.
Three, three, sorry. Appreciate, appreciate that, Dee. Um, looks like we have citizen comments. Got Mary.
I'll pass for her.
Okay. I guess that's down farther. So, nothing in the complaint forms, we're back there?
Mark, correct.
Well, I have her down farther though, so I have forgotten. Okay. Um, unfinished business, so I need to go back up here.
No, there isn't any.
Oh, no, unfinished, okay, new business now.
No.
Of course, the sheriff's department is not here for an update, but Barb has some updates and information to share with us on hometown price.
I just came here for a review of what we've been doing in hometown prices last year, so I printed it all out, you want me to read it all to you, or? Okay. Um, first of all, I think, I hope you all noticed the sculpture out there in the middle of the corner of Main Street. We did receive the grant for that, and the guy that did that was Tim Adams from Wester City. He is an artist. And, um, we had it done by July eighth, and the Brickman family, Darlene Brickman's family, did, uh, give us money towards that, to finish off the sculpture. And then there is money left over to put in the landscaping and stuff around there, but we don't know for sure when we're gonna do it, because if the city streets get tore up this next spring, we'll probably be holding off on something. And the tree grant, we did get several nineteen trees, and we put four at the roadie grounds, we put eleven, no, I was gonna think that wrong. Thirteen over at the golf course, we've had two at the Willcar's Grant Ground, and two at, two at Stride Park that were all planned this spring. And I know one of them, Jeff Jensen, who is, works for Trees Forever, he was here today, and so we do need to water those trees really well here before, um, the frost, so we will get that done. So, if anybody's willing to help, you know, this is a big project for all of us to get these trees watered, so if anybody was willing to help water these trees, that'd be great. Then we also did apply for the cake grant. And actually, Sonia Orwood was the one that wanted to do the painting, so her and her little group, uh, we got it for the schoolhouse down at Stride Park, and then also there's that little shelter house down there. So, we got them paid for them to do that, and the shelter house, and I think she said there, there must be like a gallon left over, so she probably will use the rest of that paint on the inside of the building, because she's got some plans for that. So, anyway, that got done, so that's another one done for the year, um. We've got cleaned up several of the parks again, um, we were around town the other day, and we, we even around the school, we went to the Heritage Park and cleaned up there, we cleaned up around the city community building, and Wendy about killed herself, but you know what? We got done, we trimmed some bushes, uh, there, we went down to, um, Willcar's, uh, Camper Ground, and we trimmed down there, so anyway, that should be all done for the winter now. The other, uh, I just put that on Angie, because I know we talked about this wedding roadside grant. And I know Angie applied for that through the city, and, uh, I think you got a chipper out of that, didn't you?
Yes.
So, thank you for doing that. So, those are the projects that we've done this last year, and the next one, uh, as I said, Jeff Jensen was just here today, and we have another tree grant that we're gonna apply for. We've got some spots, but he did want to know if there's anybody in the community. You do have to be a property owner, but we, he would like to have maybe just a few, if you're interested. You can, you have to plant the tree, here's the sidewalk, and here's the street, so the tree has to go in there. We gotta make sure that it's not gonna run into any water lines or anything like that, so if anybody's interested, let us know, okay Dee?
Yeah.
Pardon?
Yeah, put my knee here.
Okay.
And you won't get a selection, people. If I get your name and your address, because Jeff has to have the address, so he can go in and put it on his map, and then he will select some trees that would be appropriate for those sites, so that's kinda the way that stuff goes. There are rules, you know, there's always rules. So, and then the other thing that we would like to do, and we need to have the council or the carport's permission, but I brought this up at the park board the other day. Uh, Wendy has an idea, and I think it's, um, we want to do some historical things here in the community center. So, she knows about this, it's a four by eight, kind of a panel thing, that she would put a graphic design, historical stuff. One would be maybe something about the old school. What might, she's even kinda thinking about, you know, Ms. Markham, everybody pretty much knows Ms. Markham, you know, she might even find a little article about her. Uh, and then she's got stuff about the last bike down there or whatever, you know, some of these things are some of the things she's looking at to put on these panels. So, wouldn't it be okay if we pursue this project?
I think it'd be awesome.
I think it'd be great to, you know, again, hopefully, remind people, there is history.
Well, and I think what we're talking about today, if she gets four panels, but maybe three would go back on that wall, and one in the corner, so it would all plan.
This is gonna, this is gonna sound.
Well, I, I thought it was, but yes and no.
Well, that's what you preach, girls.
No, I didn't, I think I, I think I screwed up, Dan.
Barb, give Hanson his all that.
Yeah, yeah, we know that.
Yeah.
I've talked to Jim. So, those are the things that were, and then of course, then the next project that we would like to do, and I handed this out to you guys tonight, is from the Algonia Glass Company, in two thousand nineteen, wasn't it, Angie, when you applied or talked to
Yeah.
class people what we would really like to do, and I hope the council will go along with it and, uh, help support us. Uh, but we wanna get handicap mechanisms for the doors, for all the doors here in the community center. So, that is what we are going to apply for this next time, uh, it will be ten thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. But we do need an electrician, but then Wendy brought up today, the library and Focahanas has Bluetooth, so you don't need electrical stuff, so I sent a little message to Algonia Glass here after the meeting to see if that guy could use Bluetooth instead of using electrical wiring. So, we are about everything, you know, quite together. But we're hoping that, we need a partnership from the city council. And we were hoping that you guys would agree to help finance some of this, because it is part of the community center, it's part of the city and all this kinda stuff, so. I hope that maybe you'll discuss that now, because this grant is due like November fifteenth, but I need, so I don't know if you wanna discuss it tonight, or you have to do it by your next meeting, see if you do.
Like, like we talked about, you know, the, it's really nice getting all these grants, but how much do we gotta give in? I mean, how much you thinking?
Well, they, it was brought up a thousand dollars today.
And the library's on board with that?
I haven't heard any, I got, I'm gonna talk to Becky and see if, if they decided on anything. But, you know, we do need, we do need to have some matching funds go in with this, so, I'm just.
So, you're saying that you would like the city to put in a thousand?
That's what I'm trying to say.
For these doors?
Yeah.
And you're talking the grants?
Especially since it's over ten thousand dollars. We never get ten thousand dollars. So, we know we have to come up with funds. Last year with the Brickman, with the sculpture, we, the Brickman family donated a lot of money towards that, so.
Well, I think if we can get this all, we need to get the handicap, we have to set up, I don't, uh, I personally think that we could come up with a thousand bucks to help them out.
Are you talking a thousand a door?
No, no, no.
It's the total.
Total, total answer, so, Anna, because I have some other places.
So, then is it realistic, the library comes up with another thousand? Got something board, they're boarding up?
Or maybe we have a hundred bucks.
Decide? I don't know, I don't know if they even have that type of fund.
I don't know what kinda funds they have.
They got.
Library has plenty of money.
They got plenty of money.
That's right, that's kinda why I say if we do a thousand, then maybe they'll do a thousand.
How about if, uh, we do a thousand, they have to do a thousand?
Well, who's in charge of that?
The board.
Library board, yeah. We got, oh, the library board. That's kinda what I thought.
Well, there could be donations, you know, how they have the benches in memory of, you know, there could be, somebody might do something like that.
Well, I will go talk to Becky again and see what kinda funds, but you guys wanna make a little motion about?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that, uh, we give a thousand dollars as long as the library board gives a thousand dollars.
Oh, but what if they don't, Dan?
Well, then, folks just have to, they'll have to sort it out. Well, you know, they got, how many CDs do they got laying out?
I don't know.
We don't have a whole lot.
A lot.
You know what I mean?
I, I mean, I, I have no idea. I don't know what anybody has for money.
So, you can't put this grant in until we give you a thousand, and the library gives you a thousand?
I have to know what you're, when you write up a grant, Al, you have to have, it's called, um, in kind. And that's kinda, and, and actually, the grant does not pay for labor, they never have. So, there's quite a bit of labor, you can't see it in this, in this bid here, but I sure find a bit of it as labor, so that really helps pay for that labor is what that, basically what that's about. And our group will put some money in, you know, too, we just talked about that today, but we're wanting to see what everybody else
We had, we had kind of thought as a park board that we could probably get a thousand dollars, but I guess it's kinda like Dan, if the library ain't gonna do it, you know? I mean, they got the, they got the door.
I know, I know. So, then we do it, the parks board do it, and then we just trash that.
Well, it's, the parks board, the parks board would own that.
Well, it's true, you don't normally get your grant if you don't have some in-kind money upfront, because otherwise, it looks as though the community is not supportive of the idea.
That's kinda what it is.
So, I'll make a motion that the city.
Well, he's already got one.
He's got a motion, oh, I'm sorry.
But you didn't like my motion.
Well, I, I don't like the stipulation of the, you know, yeah. I really feel the library and or park, if the money is there, I can't see them saying no. Or I second it. You're seconding Dan's with the library stipulation?
No, no.
No, well, then, yeah.
Does anybody get a second Dan's with the library stipulation?
You don't?
Alex?
Okay, so then now it's a roll call.
Do, yeah, do a roll call.
Roll call vote on a thousand dollars as long as the library gives a thousand dollars towards this project of the handicap accessible doors. Al?
Yep.
No.
Yep.
No.
What's good for the good is good for the end, or is it?
They got money, they'll put it in.
I, that's.
Yeah, I could say yes, yeah, I can vote.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, you want yes?
Dan and?
Al.
Say, go ahead and, because I, that's how confident I am, the library's gonna give a thousand dollars, so.
Okay.
Very good. So, the motion passes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for your time, and thank you for your money.
And we gotta get. Okay, um, then we need to approve the annual financial report. Hasn't looked at it, it was sent in the attachment of our email from Angie.
It's just how we, just have to report how we spent our money, what money we took in.
So, this is already done, then?
Yeah, it's done, this was basically, it was basically a formality. I don't know if I can make it bigger.
He can hear these.
I'll make a motion to approve the financial.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Now.
Go up to the top, it's a PDF file.
There is engagement letter with orders and company changing.
They're doing our urban revitalization. You guys approved to have them do it, but now you've got their engagement letter to do it. Their, the formal paperwork. To redo, to redo our urban revitalization with the state.
Basically, it's something we already approved, but now we gotta approve the paper trail.
Yes.
Should've seen the motion board.
Yes.
Yeah, I moved it.
I second that.
I think I can pick Rob D to the answer. Yeah, um, he called me, this Ben Jacobson that wants to possibly open a liquor store slash cigarette outlet in town. He's also a truck driver, he just called about it a couple hours ago, saying he broke down inside the road in Worthington, Minnesota, and didn't think he was gonna make it, he would try and get here. I told him probably the latest would be six fifteen, we might still be, otherwise, we'll have to wait till next meeting. So, I suppose we can just skip.
Go on to a few seconds.
Yeah.
I like to bring up something about this, though. First of all, where do you film?
I don't know, that's why he was gonna come to talk to all you.
We have a lot of questions to get answers to.
First of all, you know, the, the co-op has been good enough to put this pronto in for us, and, uh, they actually do have liquor there. I just don't really think we need to be running competition with the businesses trying to help us out.
But the competition don't sell a lot of litters that they should have. That I need for the golf course, they don't have.
Well.
So, then I have to run to Hummer.
Is that that big a deal?
Run to Hummer?
Yeah.
All the time, yes.
It's my time.
It's my time for free and my gas, so.
Yeah, well, certainly.
And we don't know what building or anything either.
No, no.
So, let's put that for a while, maybe he'll still show, because we do have a lot of questions that we need some answers to. Okay, let's talk about truck or treat. Are we going to, say the city's going to have? Are we going to say the city's going to have it at a set location rather than the house to house? Or what is the council?
Well, I think it's what they did last year when they said, you still have, you still have our trick or treat night on the thirty-first from five thirty, seven thirty. But this is somebody, a different day. I know most of the other towns do it on a whole separate day. Well, I know.
I don't take part in trunk or treat.
I don't do that.
Why can't it just be one or the other?
Well, that's up to you. I mean, up to not you, to the council. Cause right now it's said that we always have trick or treat on the thirty-first from five thirty to seven thirty.
Okay. Add to that. Can you change the time? I know you guys have it from five thirty to seven thirty. But seven o'clock, it could be done. There aren't that many trick or treats anymore. And I feel bad. I turned my light on. I'm thinking, I'm on the bed. I'm not sitting around anymore for one or two little kids. So hurry with you.
So what time is it?
Yeah.
Five thirty to seven thirty.
I don't understand.
It was said by five thirty because that's what time most people work off and work home. The parents work home by five thirty. Cause years ago we did set it at five, but then we had parents like, I'm just getting off work at five. I can't get home. So. But the trunk or treat, I mean, if you guys wanna change up everything and not do, that's up to you guys.
Well, you need two nights.
Well, I think so. Cause I gave decorations to do. They set up stuff at the, um, High Heritage Park.
A few of us did not last.
Yeah, you can make that one. On the same day, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna drink and I'm gonna.
I think there was five. Karen Johnson, Mary Willcat, myself and two others.
Can you change it?
What's that?
Change it?
No.
So we're more here.
I think one night is funny.
Yeah, sorry.
Call me the evil.
I think one night of winding them up is enough. I'm sorry.
I agree. I don't think another town would organize.
Okay, how about you and then, like, like Barb said, this is.
Well, especially if it's going to be done as a trunk. Gathering rather than say individual going to the houses, an hour and a half would be funny in my opinion.
So I thought in order to do the trunk or treat, you're just gonna leave.
Right, we're just gonna leave it.
Yeah. Cause not everybody's gonna wanna decorate their trunks.
What about you ladies? You wanna come upstairs or go to your house like a new day? Anybody care?
I don't do it anymore.
I like the idea that it's at one location. You don't worry about the kids falling down, getting hurt. Um, I don't know. And, and the kids, and the kids, they can make better time, you know, let's face it. They wanna hit as many places as they can. If it was nice, you know, whether it's on both sides of this street or both sides of Des Moines or, I don't know, wouldn't they care?
You're gonna wear those sneakers?
No.
Cause people decorate their cars, their trucks.
You're still on the street.
No, I'm not. I'm a fifteen. That would be a good idea.
But what about your older people that still love to give out candy? They're not gonna, they're not gonna decorate their cars too.
Well, there's a lot of people I should have, I didn't want to. Cause they do it uptown. They didn't, they didn't wanna have their lights on at the house. So I, I.
Do both in one night. Give the option like that over here and then if you ain't after it, we do it on. You five thirty to seven.
That a motion?
Okay, yeah, that's a motion.
I second this.
Alright, so we're going from five thirty to seven.
And you can either be.
And you have the option. If you wanna come down to the gazebo or the, the park and hand out your candy, that's fine. If not, turn your light on at the house. You can do it at your house. But they'll have the option of what they wanna do. If they wanna get both places, they can do it. It'll be all on the same night.
Yep.
So that night is October.
Thirty first.
The Tuesday.
On Halloween, on thirty first, yep.
So October thirty first from five thirty to seven. Your place or down here. So we have a motion and a second. All ayes?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so that's when it shall be. Um, set a date for meet the candidates. Okay, we vote on November seventh.
So it's gonna be the next, uh, Monday or Thursday.
So.
Sixteen, twenty-third, thirty, yes. Two weeks. Two weeks would be the twenty-third.
Anybody opposed or you wanna make a?
I wish that we do it on the twenty-third.
County's done a motion for the twenty-third of October.
So you're.
You have a second. All votes in favor?
Right.
Anybody opposed? So it's the twenty-third and the time is at.
It's usually same time, five thirty.
Same time as our meeting?
Yeah.
Five thirty. It should be later.
I'll say it's at.
Okay.
Do you wanna put it at six? It's time.
Again, I just am thinking of, some of us don't get here at five thirty. I would get off till five thirty if I do a pharmacy. So six thirty? Six thirty?
The audience, I hear six o'clock in the audience.
Six o'clock. Okay, that's fine.
Remember Barb goes to bed at seven thirty.
No. So six o'clock on the twenty-third, it will be the meet the candidates.
I don't know if we wanna, these were, this was Jim's kinda baby. So.
We wait for Jim.
Yeah.
We're gonna table the possible ordinance changes. Cause Jim was kinda working towards that. And do we have any nuisance?
Nope. Nope.
So our gentleman, let's see, it's only six oh five. We thought maybe six fifteen?
I said at the latest. So it's, I told him there's no guarantee. So I have.
I don't want him feeling like, or trying not to accommodate him, but.
But I told him, um, if he gets, that, we'll, we'll put him on next month's agenda.
Well, we'll go ahead and do that. So we've got cleanup days that was today and tomorrow. So that's something that's going on. I've had a great amount of compliments on the water tower and how nice it looks.
I had compliments about it when I went to Focahanos County Economic Committee also. People have seen pictures posted on Facebook. So the other members in the county were, thought that was hilarious.
Just probably adjourned. Yep, so everybody work together. We're still a resident of Roth. And Mary, you have said maybe you wanted to make comments.
Well, she just said something.
I forgot to say the pledge of allegiance.
Oh, I'm sorry. So can we end with the pledge of allegiance?
We certainly can.
I know that's not the way it's supposed to be done. My apologies, but let's do that and then we'll adjourn.
Dee, Dee shutting lights off on.
I was trying to turn the light on.
Now I got the strobes on. Shut the strobes off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody have a good night.
I need a jury.
Okay.